Comerford.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Mercurio.
Here.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Here, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Weber, who's on the roll?
Mr. Mercurio.
Hi.
Mr. Ballin.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Um, Mr. Forstoppel, we have a recommendation this morning.
Oh, meeting protocol, sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
Mrs. Weber, please review the meeting protocol.
Okay, we'll go on to the next slide, Mr. Fritz.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining us this morning. Um, as we have done for the over a year now, we are providing our meeting in a virtual format. For today's agenda, you can go to the Board of Education website on, uh, the Sycamore website on the Board of Education page and access both the agenda and the addendum for this meeting. Once approved, the minutes for this meeting will also be posted on that same, same page. For those of you who are participating with us virtually today, we ask you that you send your questions or comments or requests if you would like to participate in the public participation section or provide comment on any of today's agenda items by sending those questions or comments to our moderators today. They are Chad Lewis and Bill Fritz, and you can see their email addresses there. So we do ask, we do have a chat within the meeting. We ask that that only be used for technical issues that you might have, not for comments with the meeting. Please direct those to our moderators for today's meeting. So we have a couple of agenda items prior to public participation. So please make sure that you get that information to us if you would want to make any kind of public comment in that section. Uh, thank you so much. I didn't miss anything, Mrs. Weiss. If not, I think we are now ready for some back on track introductions.
Mr. Forstoppel.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. We, we have a star in our midst this morning. A young man by the name of Casey Goans, who's got over, got over the hurdle and has been an amazing, amazing young person for our district. So I would like to turn it over to Mr. Lewis. He'll give a little bit more detail about just the amazing accomplishments of this fine young man.
And I, it's nice to be able to give all the credit to someone else, you know. You knew you all got a chance to get some communication from Casey because, you know, I think this was part of a, kind of a final assignment or just something that he felt passionately about doing. And, you know, the way I received it was from a teacher that, you know, thought, thought a lot of Casey and was Mr. Oaks, uh, who, you know, sent it over to me with a personalized note, just, you know, congratulating me on the position of superintendent, but, you know, really felt like I needed to hear from Casey and also to see, you know, the impact that Aves Academy, which I already knew, but it's always good to be refreshed and reminded of the impact that Aves Academy can have on the lives and the students that end up at Aves Academy. And whenever we can, I think it's important for all of us to hear from our students. And, you know, Casey, his willingness to come at 7:30 on a day that he doesn't have to be in school past his senior year, uh, and I thought, you know, that's, that's pretty special. So, um, we thought it would be good, especially because the community hasn't seen it. Casey wanted to, you know, just kind of go over this with you, you know, maybe you can just read what some of his thoughts were about Aves Academy. And then, you know, certainly he's supported by Mr. Weigle, who does a, a great job with all the students at Aves Academy, but they're happy to answer any questions he might have afterward. But, uh, Casey, the floor is yours, my friend. You can, you know, talk about yourself a little bit, maybe share a little bit about yourself and then, you know, why you wrote this letter and do you guys want him to get in more of the view of the camera so he can be seen? All right, so it's, it's kind of pointing at Mr. Forstoppel, so.
So do you want me to stand facing the camera or?
Either way, Casey, whatever you'd like.
Whatever you're most comfortable with. You're talking to the people in the room, so that's okay.
Yeah, all right, so basically, I'm Casey and I came in here this morning to share a little essay that I wrote while I was at Aves. And I wrote this essay because I care about Aves a lot and it's done a lot for me. And so I just want to share a little bit about it. And how I think it could be improved a little bit. One second. And then feel free to ask me questions after this. Dear Sycamore Board of Education, imagine you're a senior in high school, just for a minute. You haven't had much difficulty getting through the previous 11 years of education. The last summer, something big changed in your life. You lost someone very dear to you and it crowds your mind often. The school year has been very tough for you, not because you're lazy and don't even want to try, but that recent change in your life affects your brain and it is genuinely just much harder to learn and you can't seem to do it by yourself. It is so frustrating. As a result of things getting difficult out of nowhere, you can really start to doubt yourself. Even think you're just a dumb kid who wasn't meant to succeed. That is an easy mental pit to fall into, but it's not the truth. I'm Casey Goans. I'm a senior here at Sycamore, now graduated. And that scenario you just envisioned is how I would describe the majority of my senior year. However, there is a part I did not include, and that is when I was offered the option to take up Aves Academy. Aves Academy saved me and Aves Academy needs to be available to more kids. Before attending Aves, I was failing calculus and English. Failing classes makes you feel bad. It makes you think you're not good enough. It makes you feel dumb and incapable of learning the same way the other kids do. Failure caused me a lot of self doubt and I had very little confidence anytime I attempted to learn. I was in a state of mind where if I was faced with new material and I didn't immediately understand it, I would give up because I had no confidence that I was able to learn whatever I was faced with. You get into this cycle and keep digging a bigger hole. I was rescued from this hole by a combination of adults at the high school that are very special people. Then once I was officially taking classes at Aves, that's when the ball started rolling. I got more one-on-one help in explaining than I had ever gotten in my life. As a result of this, I was finally understanding and applying material. I was beginning to feel better as a student and a person. I found that I was regaining confidence quickly and was losing all the self doubt that piled up on me in the past. Self doubt, especially high levels of it, can be very toxic and make it so easy and appealing to surrender to challenges you face. Aves does an amazing job of eliminating self doubt. Aves presents the opportunity to prevent any doubts you may have about your knowledge, ability level, or confidence. I've just felt better about learning here and even eager to do so. Being genuinely excited to learn is not something that I've felt for a long time before this experience. Obviously, I'm praising Aves a lot for what it has done for me. However, there's one main aspect of this program that I see as faulty, and that's accessibility. I'm so thankful for the time that I've had here and quite honestly, I don't know what things would look like if I hadn't spent my second semester here. And that's the problem. I know I'm not the only one going through something hard and I know I'm not the only one whose education has been affected negatively by that. I know there are others like me who don't get this opportunity and I see this as being able to change the course of somebody's future. I've learned more than just English and math here. I've learned about myself. I hold myself higher now and I believe this will affect my life after high school. I think others deserve to have the same opportunities and experiences. I barely knew this place before I was talked to by adults about it, let alone did I know what it would offer. Therefore, if I hadn't been nudged to take up Aves Academy, I most surely wouldn't have ended up here. And that's what I think happens to a lot of Sycamore kids. They have hard things to deal with at home, struggle in school, never get a golden opportunity like I did and get trapped in the toxic cycle that I talked about earlier. Aves Academy is small and in my opinion, under the radar of my students. Many kids could benefit immensely from Aves Academy the way I have and I think it would only be fair if everyone had the opportunity to do so. Thank you for your time.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any questions for Casey?
Well, I do have a question about how do we connect kids to Aves Academy? So how, how did we find Casey?
Typically, it's, it's, um, through the guidance counselors at the high school. Um, as they work closely with students and Mr. Weigle, you certainly could hop in here as well, you know, the students' experience and.
Typically, the counselor. Yes, sir. They, the counselors do come to me with students that, uh, and Mrs. Mitchell had worked pretty closely with Casey for the last four years and, and she's our counselor at Aves, but we have a good rapport and we try to set every kid up that, that, that needs it. It's a double edged sword. Sometimes we approach kids and they, they don't want to come over. So we just try to stand back until they're ready to come over and, and ready to make the move. So, uh, you know, flying under the radar and making sure we have seats available, we always, we always take in as many as we can. But, uh, you know, she came to us with Casey and he, he came right in and just embodied into what we do and, and just flourished. We've pretty good people over there too, Don Case.
Yeah, teachers are amazing.
And Mr. Mercurio, I would say that's usually the, the start. So we usually start at seniors that need some additional support and work our way down. And depending on, we've had seventh and eighth graders there under special circumstances and then, you know, but mostly, you know, we, we obviously save the seats for students that need that extra support to be able to graduate potentially on time. But I think a lot of these conversations come through intervention discussions with Mark and it, it could start with attendance issues. It could be, uh, just disengagement, you know, not, not being engaged in the educational process. It could be, you know, just a, you know, like Casey talked about, it might just be a change of environment that's needed. And I would say that's what we've seen, the students that, and this is a quote from Mark. I always hear Mark tell the kids, if you'll buy into what we're doing here, you'll be successful. That's what it takes is, you know, Casey obviously came in and bought right in and did the work that needed to be done. If they don't buy in, there's nothing that they're going to be able to do to help that student. But when they buy in, you can really see what Casey described in this letter for a lot of students is that, that reinvigoration of like, I'm excited to learn again, this is helping me meet my needs instead of, you know, the traditional setting.
Well, that's great, Casey. Thanks for sharing that. You brought up the accessibility issue. And I'm wondering, is there an avenue for the students that, you know, people that could benefit from this? To go to the counselors rather than it always coming from us to identify kids? Is there a potential for kids to come to the counselors to get accessible?
I mean, I would say that, that, that doesn't traditionally happen, but, uh, that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen. I think we have had students that have come down and said, look, this is the marketing for me. What else? What are the options on the table? Which obviously you all know, we have a few options that don't look like the traditional setting. But, you know, certainly I think to Casey's point, and Mark and I have talked about this, about, you know, being able to service the students the way we want to service them and how many can we service at a time? And we're, I think we constantly talk about, is there opportunities for other students not to be sent off to programs, but to stay here? And that, I will say that they've done a very good job of making sure that it's a fit for the student. And I, I think we spend a lot of time having those discussions before we put them in that role.
Okay, my final question is, it sounds like we're capped on enrollment every year. Like, we fill that up, is that correct?
Yeah, we, 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 we keep seats full all the time.
So is there a need to expand that program?
And, and we are slowly evolving that direction. We picked up, uh, a, a part-time science teacher this year and, and that's going to give us some flexibility. But we don't turn anyone away. We go over our cap. And typically what happens is we look at if we have seniors going out relatively quickly and how we can infuse those other kids into it. So it's just a, just a, something we manage as quickly as possible, but, um, we do keep the seats full. And it gets a little, uh, close to graduation as we start to see things empty out a little bit. But, uh, um, we just took a student in, uh, last week, uh, that was working through some tough situations and we're working with them in a couple of classes right now. So, you know, Mr. Lewis will tell you, it's kind of hard. I, I really can't say no to anybody, you know? It's, it's a tough one to do. You know, these, these kids, you know, they, they just need a different, just a different feel for, for what's going on educationally. And, and I think our people at Aves are, uh, they're, they're, they're the best. I mean, they, they know what to do. They, and, uh, and everybody's been supportive. So I really appreciate everyone's support and thanks for everything you do. And thank you for saving students like Casey.
Casey, I just, I want to congratulate you for your graduation and getting through, uh, the senior year. You mentioned about, um, making it open to more kids. From a student's perspective, you know, what, what can be done to make that more? Is it, is it, um, that students don't know about the program? Is it a marketing of the program? Is it accessibility? From a student's view, do you have anything that you can add?
From my view, I'll be honest, before I was like, can't, like, before my counselor talked to me about it, I kind of, I've heard of it and I kind of just had this stigma in my brain that it was like Aves Academy is just for the kids who get suspended a lot and like, like it's dumb, but that was just, you know, what I honestly thought.
So marketing.
And then when I was told about going there, I was like, crazy, not a bad shit. And, um, yeah, but then they told me more about it and I was like, oh, this isn't what I thought it was. So I think a lot of kids actually think the way I think and wouldn't even consider going. And, um, so I wish more kids knew about what it really was and what it had to offer. But I also see why it's kind of under the radar because it's so effective because of all the attentiveness and care that every student gets there. Like, it would just become less effective if there were a ton more kids that the teachers had to split their time between. Because then you're, you're just a kid sitting there confused and you have to wait like five minutes to ask your question because they're helping someone else. Which isn't what happened to me, but if there were more kids there, I could see that happening. Which is why I think the whole program would need to get bigger to cater to more kids.
Great, thank you.
Casey, I think you answered that question really, really well. Mr. Ball, thank you for asking.
Thanks.
But the whole idea around education, marketing, but it could become a staffing resource question, right? And we continue to work with that every single year. And Mark and Mr. Weigle is a strong advocate for that because he knows how important that program is and how successful it is. Like he says, he doesn't want to have to terminate a student, boy, and he makes it work. But I think as, as we look at the broader resource question, that could be something that Mr. Oaks and his team want to look at.
Yeah, I mean, in all fairness, it was a, it was kind of a weird question. That's, I think that is, part of our issue is the marketing of the program. So there's not a stigma attached to it. To think that this is only a place where, um, kids that have behavior problems or other issues go to, but it's, it's actually another resource for kids to get back on track, um, and to really pull them back in. Thank you.
Which is very interesting because we've, we've intentionally tried to not make it that type of program. I mean, there are times that I have to call Mr. Weigle and say, I gotta, I gotta, I'll use Mr. Forstoppel's term. I have a growth opportunity for you. And so he always knows when I'm calling. He's like, okay, what do you want? And what is it, you know, I'm always kind of thinking, what's this going to cost? You know, I have to bribe him sometimes, but really and truly, he's taken on so many students that would be lost without he and the rest of the staff at Aves. And Casey really hit one of the key points, the attentiveness and the care that they get. And it's not that they can't get that in this high school setting, it's just different. It's the close, I think it's the close relationships they build. And I'm, I'm glad I stayed away from him this, this week, uh, this past weekend at graduation because, you know, it makes you jealous, the amount of people that come to hug him and, you know, thank him for all he's done. I'm standing down there tonight. I'm not standing next to him. It's, he gets way too many hugs and stuff. But it's just a, I think what you see with him and the rest of the staff is they, they've done some amazing work with a lot of students within our district that probably wouldn't have made it. So that's, I think that's a huge thing.
Casey, thank you for coming to speak with us today. I really appreciate hearing your voice and representing Aves Academy. My question's a simple one. Look, given that there is a capacity constraint, how many students currently are we serving in the Aves Academy?
Oh, with the 33 seniors finished with us this year in some capacity. And we typically hit anywhere, average between 58 and 65 kids a year. That number has kind of slid up to 65. Got quite a large contingent of younger kids that we tried to work into a program due to extended days away from school. Virtual's not working. So, um, we are not a program that works well with younger kids, sophomores and freshmen because we're typically the ones that bring the juniors in and seniors to try to recover and get them out. So that's been a, an area that we, we really focused to try to work on a little bit this year. But, um, it's, it's, it's hard to fill your seats with underclassmen and then have someone come with you as, with a senior that's, it's got a tough situation. So, um, you know, Casey talks, it, sometimes we do get, uh, the reputation of taking it to some difficult situations, but we have a young lady over there, uh, last year that, that, um, she was kind of known as the LeBron James of flute players. She was the number three flute player in the world. And she's at Ju, the Juilliard Academy and her problem was she would be at Paris, France playing, then go to Las Vegas and then go to New Orleans. So she was all over the place. She was, we also had a ballet girl, ballet star. This year we have a girl that finished her junior year. She's gonna, she, she tried out and made the Tulsa Ballet. Uh, we have an equestrian girl that finished up with us. There's a lot of different pieces there, but, uh, we, we do have to get better. We can continue to get better. We work in that in every way we can.
Well, Casey, I wanted to say thank you for sharing your, your experience at Aves Academy. I think you might have a career in writing. I think you might want to pursue that. But thanks for sharing. And, and Mr. Weigle to you and Mr. Oaks and your staff. I actually had another one of your families reach out to me and just sing your praises this year. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me and for listening to me.
So Casey, I, if I may, it's one of the incredible courage for you to come here today. So I thank you. You were so eloquent, not only in what you wrote or what you said to the Board of Education, but I'd also like to congratulate you on your resilience, um, and how you persevered and got to where you wanted to go. So can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What's next?
I'm going to Cincinnati State next year and studying land surveying.
Good for you.
And I'll be getting a bachelor's degree in that.
That's fantastic. We are very, very proud of you. Can we give the showman a?
Hey, we work with a lot of land surveyors, so when you graduate, let us know.
All right.
Help you with that.
You need someone. Thank you, guys.
So it's, yeah.
Get your glasses on.
Yeah. I'm gonna go back.
Thank you all for taking the time to speak.
But.
All right, um, Mrs. Weber, do we have any public participation?
I think you have one more, right, more.
Oh, yes, you are correct.
Right.
Sorry, that's not a, yes, please.
That's right. So we would like to welcome back, um, just a phenomenal leader. And that is Misty Bell from, spent some time at the junior high and is now being welcomed back as a district leadership position. So Mr. Lewis, do you and Mrs. Spencer want to think of all of this?
Can't see Mrs. Spencer, but, um, uh, what I would say is, you know, we, we went through, uh, and Mrs. Spencer led a team of people through, uh, a multi-round interview, uh, process. And I'll just tell you, I remember hearing from Mrs. Spencer after each round and I just kept checking in with her to say, hey, how's it going? And she's like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, Misty's just absolutely just doing a great job every round. I said, okay, well, keep it forward, keep me up to date. And when we got to round three, I was, I was literally at the baseball field. She's calling me saying, we've got to lock Misty up. We've got to get Misty back in the district today. And that's the kind of leader we knew we were getting back. And, you know, she excelled in all three rounds and I honestly, um, I don't want to speak for her, but I think that coming back to this position is her dream job. It's one of the things that she's had in her career goals and I'll be completely transparent. I stayed in contact with Misty throughout the last year, hoping she would come back to the district because she was a big loss for us. So, um, you know, she brings a, a tremendous skill set to the position and I know that, you know, she's going to be a tremendous support to Mrs. Spencer and really raising that team even higher to make sure that we're supporting all of our students with special needs around the district. So, um, it, it will be, um, with great pleasure that we recommend Misty Bell from to come back to the school district and, you know, be a partner. And I'll say from a district standpoint, I'm excited to have her on the district team because I've had numerous conversations with Misty over the years and she's one of the leaders that is not scared to stand up and say what needs to be said, when it needs to be said. And I experienced that multiple times with her. So, Mrs. Spencer, anything that I left out, uh, from your standpoint? She's smiling from ear to ear, so.
We're just very excited to have Misty, uh, back with us. She did an amazing job through the interview, uh, really capturing her leadership style and what she could bring to Sycamore to improve, uh, what we have going on right now. So we are very excited. I know that, I think she might be on today. I can't see her, but, um. Oh, okay, I didn't see her in there. Um, so we're very excited to have her, um, uh, back with us. So welcome back, Misty.
Thank you so much.
Anything you'd like to say to the group, Misty?
I am just so excited about the opportunity to, why, rejoin the team? Because Sycamore is home for me. It is a big part of my family. I had an opportunity to lead and grow. Um, I'm better for it. And I feel like that I can give more of myself, um, at a higher level because of the experiences that I've had. But I'm thrilled that the district thought enough of me to go to the God and allowed me to be a part of the leadership team here in Sycamore and I am excited about serving. This great community that has given so much to me, I'm excited about giving so much of myself back to the team. So thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Members of the board, we, you will formally take action on Misty's approval later on in the agenda. So Misty, welcome back.
Yes, sir.
You have some closure things that you need to do at your current place of employment, right?
Yes.
All right. Good deal.
Picture.
Oh, yes, picture with Mr. Lewis, please. Nothing, members of the board?
Why don't we just get, um, Mr. Lewis, if you want to be involved in the device, if we can get here quickly as well. So we're not.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Weber or Mr. Lewis or Mr. Fritz, do we have anyone for public participation today?
I, I do not.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's agenda, healthy Aves updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. I will turn this over, uh, to Mr. Lewis as he's been working diligently with, uh, his team moving forward, as we lead forward, uh, to the opening of the 2021, 2022 year. It's hardly a year, we've been through. So, Mr. Lewis, any updates? And I know you've got some members, uh, that have tuned in today.
Sure, just a couple of quick updates. We had a, um, I, I think a pretty successful May 26, 2021 information session. We had a lot of information sessions that day. We did two strategic plan updates and then the healthy Aves update. And, you know, I think what my takeaway would be from that session is, you know, and we, we set it up front to the community. We recognized that this decision and the decisions coming forward are going to elicit a lot of emotions from various people. And what we saw from the people that participated is it's, it's very mixed on how people feel about, um, some of the protocols that are. um, some of the protocols that are currently still in place for schools, you know, for, from the government, from, from the governor of Ohio. And how some people feel like they should be completely removed and all of them should be removed right now. So there were, there were certainly the extremes on each end and then there were, you know, kind of a mixed bag in the middle of, you know, people that maybe are uncomfortable with some and not uncomfortable. So it was just a very, I, I think we, we acknowledged it and said, look, we understand that this is going to be a difficult situation. And that's why we're not making any major decisions today. And I, you know, I know that can be frustrating for our community and frustrating for our, um, uh, parents. But, you know, we don't have data to react to on May twenty-sixth. And, and we just kept saying that throughout the session, that our job is to react to the data going forward. And we'll do that as we'll continue to review it each week, but until we get to late July, early August, there's no reaction from the district to make any decisions for an August thirtieth return to school. So we reinforced that several times. I think, you know, that resonated with people that, and they understood. I didn't, you know, get any, uh, significant feedback following the session that, you know, people were upset that we hadn't made a decision. I think it was quite the opposite. They appreciated just hearing more, um, and hearing more details of why we weren't making decisions right now. And we were okay making a few decisions, like temperature checks are not going to be, uh, going on next year as they did this year. We will ask people to do those self-checks at home, but overall, I, I think those were minimally, uh, decisions that could be made. And then as you're aware, on June, June second today, a lot of the protocols in the state are expiring and going away. But then, you know, the governor came back out and said, well, schools are going to stay in place, you know, the masking is going to stay in place. So we felt it was important since summer school is an extension of this school year, that we would leave our healthy protocols in place for this school year and including summer school. Again, we will continue to react to the data if, and, and we will react to the health guidelines. If the health guidelines change in the middle of summer school, we'll, we'll certainly do a review and react at that time. But currently, the, the masking, uh, and distancing will remain in place for summer school. Mr. Lewis, has the governor said, given any indication that we, uh, when we will get guidelines for the next school year? We have not given any clear indication of when that would happen. So, and I, I'll, I'll be honest with Mr. Ballin. I, I am a little bit concerned that the guideline, when it comes, will be figured out for yourself. And, you know, we'll accept that challenge when we get it, but I think, you know, I, I said this to a colleague yesterday. It's been interesting that they've provided guidance and data and information all along and, you know, even mandatory things. And then if they lift it, are, they're just going to let us go on our own? It just seems, it, it doesn't seem to match the previous communications about all of this. But again, we'll, we'll certainly make those reactions later in the year. But again, if it starts to un- unfold during summer, then we'll take a good look at it. The only other thing I would say about Healthy Aids is, you know, I think we're going to look at having some future information sessions, working with Mrs. Bob Bright to determine what those are. And, you know, we'd be looking at some staff sessions, uh, and also some community sessions of some kind. So, you know, we'll vet that out to think about how that would best serve us and, and serve our community and serve our teaching staff and our classified staff. But, um, it was something we talked about after the, uh, information session. We just felt like it was, there's probably a, an opportunity there to make sure that we're, we're hearing from people again this summer before we make final decisions. So, and, and I think that's something we pride ourselves on is making sure that our community, our, uh, school community feels heard. So, other than that, uh, that's, that's kind of where we're at for now. And, you know, again, we'll, we'll continue to look at data. I appreciate Mr. Mercurio and the rest of the dart team, uh, staying engaged. And, you know, we are going to give them a little bit of a break. We did say we would not meet on a weekly basis. Because again, we've been meeting since the beginning of the school year, even, you know, throughout the summer. But then Mr. Mercurio agreed to still, you know, take a look at the data and forward it on. And, you know, we'll continue to review it over the summer. But I, what our experts are saying is that they don't see that we're going to probably see a huge spike or anything over the summer. What they're worried about is, you know, November one, uh, the fall of twenty-one is when they're concerned about a spike. So, um, I would say that's the last thing that I left, uh, the community with, and I'll leave all of you with, is that, we did say, depending on what our decisions are in late July, early August, that doesn't mean that, let's say that some of the restrictions have loosened and we're, we're able to remove some of our restrictions. It doesn't mean that in November of twenty-twenty-one, if there's a spike that we may not put, Healthy Aids protocols that are more strict back into place. I thought that was an important piece, uh, to put out in our community session because that, that's a reality that we just don't know. But I, again, it goes back to that reaction of data. We're not going to predict data and we're going to react to it. So I think all of those things were good and, um, I look forward to, you know, being able to give these updates periodically. But as of right now, that's, that's where we're at.
Sure. Um, if vaccination becomes one of the state mandated vaccinations, a lot of ones we use for coming into school as part of the immunization, do we have the infrastructure or information needs, um, to be able to track that? We have to set something up right now and start thinking about how that would play into a future school entrance.
We would be able to use final forms. Uh, they have that infrastructure that I believe they've, um, added this as an option now. Like there is an optional, you can list that you've, it's not required, but you can list that you've had the COVID vaccination. If we were to need them to update it and change it, we could make it a mandatory thing, a mandatory field that has to be filled out.
And is the final forms the not a doctor's form or something like that signed off? I thought you meant to get a doc for your immunization or anything.
There might be a, it sounds like there's an adjustment we could make to make that happen.
Can we just check that out over the, just so we're ready?
If it becomes mandated, like, uh, some of your other vaccinations, your student information system will want to track that as well. So I, I would say, we don't know that answer yet, but I would say that they'll respond to that, our student information system as well, but we can look into that.
Right now, all of our vaccination is a self-report from the parent to, or this is our school nurse. So it could just be added to that self-reporting. Uh, that you go through either registration or, you know, for some of you who will have seniors next year, there's an additional vaccination that's required. So there's a, a notification and follow-up by our school nursing team, uh, to make sure that those are, are up to date. So that's basically how it works now for all of the other vaccinations that are required by state law. So that would be added, that would be something, only there to track that.
If, if I may, that's a great question, Mr. Adams. And I, I would offer just two pieces of information to think about. Right now, the vaccinations are being utilized on an emergency authorization basis. There's a whole nother layer that needs to go through before they are, I guess, more formally. And then any kind of, any kind of requirement for school-aged kid needs to come via state law. Okay, and we would be compliant with that. So I, I think that's a little bit down the road, because of all the layers that needs to be happening. But understand that when it gets to that, if it, when it gets to that point, our system will be able to handle that.
We'll definitely look into it now, see what needs to happen. Snap, snap, we have a snap add-on too. Nurses, they, they really track in depth. So they'll respond. I'm sure they'll respond to that. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other questions? Master facility plan update.
Yes, um, I'll turn this over to Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Weber, but we are gearing up for a very busy summer. All you gotta do is see the activity going on. So it's exciting time for us. Mr. Lewis, thank you.
Yeah, just a, I would say, basic update, you know, there's no pictures this week because, you know, things were roughly in the same place they were the last time you saw them. So I didn't want to bore you with more soil pictures and things like that. What I can tell you is if you, you know, if you, uh, want to reach out to any principals and thank them for their work this summer, Jessica Ralston, right now, you know, between now and by the end of the day, Sunday, they have to clear out the entire building. And literally it starts Friday, which is the staff's last day and it has to be done by Sunday. So, uh, just keep her in your thoughts because she's, I saw her yesterday and she just looked tired and just thinking about how much they have to do because they need the entire building cleared to be able to do a lot of the, you know, work and some of the thing, you know, some of the connections and things that they have to move and make, make, uh, changes to. Uh, they needed an empty building to do it. So our movers, we, we hired a commercial moving crew to come in and, and move everything out. Especially, you know, if you think about some of the more expensive things like instruments and things like that. We needed to move them to climate-controlled areas, so move another buildings and things of that nature. But, you know, they have a pretty exhausted process over the next few days to complete. And then the high school is also, so as soon as Sims finished, the high school takes off from June seventh. Within a couple of days, they have to clear out areas that the movers are basically moving from Sims right to the high school. So that's a big difference. And, you know, Green and Junior High are obviously new builds, so they don't have that experience. Being a renovation, they have major moving going on. So, um, and we did, you know, right now, I, storage, uh, is a premium right now. There's, uh, from, from what I understand, Amazon and a few others have bought up all the storage and, you know, especially tractor-trailer storage type units all over the area. You can't find one within miles of yours. Uh, we had some early on and then we ended up having to have, uh, our moving company planes take it. And they're going to have to store it at their facility for some of the things that we have to have, teachers, you know, materials and things like that. And I think the best thing is this is a great time for a purge. So, you know, when you go through a process like this, you know, there's going to be some people that they hold on to this rickety old, you know, table or something like that. We go back through and make sure that it's safe. And, you know, we kind of remove all these things and, you know, we remove a lot of the personal appliances and things like that that just leak in over time. So it's, it's a good time for a purge. There'll be a, I, I think we'll be in a much better place when we come back. And that's what we always try to do is when we come back into a newly renovated space, let's minimize the things we bring back that you truly need for, uh, accessibility. The only other thing I would report back on, uh, you, you may recall, we had a number of families come and talk to us about the TIP relocation. Mrs. Spencer did a great job yesterday having an open house, um, for any family that wanted to come see where, where we're looking at as the new space, which is at Kenwood Road where the Virtual Learning Commons is. Uh, I would say that every family, now I was on the phone, so I, I told her, I apologize. She was there by herself and I was supposed to be there by four-thirty and I think I finally walked in at five-fifteen after getting off the phone. But every family that came out that walked by me and there were families that I had seen, some of them, yes, and some of them were new families, but they were all excited about the new space and thankful that there was an opportunity to be in this space. So, you know, I'd say lessons learned from the previous process is just, it was a good, I, good time to engage with these families and make sure that we continue to support them going forward, whether they're at this location or another location. But just making sure they feel involved in that process. So, um, I would say I felt good about leaving there. I think four families visited yesterday. And then previously, a somewhat, a few other families engaged with us and came to the space as we talked about some of the changes that needed to be made to the space. So, um, I would just say, I think that, that issue is probably closed. And I think those families will be very happy going forward if we can continue to find spaces like that to put them in. So. Yeah.
Any questions from the board? All right, moving on, I need a motion for the approval of a change order for Sycamore Junior High School.
So moved. Items three, four and five, I'll turn over to Mr. Lewis.
So there are five change orders, uh, with Sycamore Junior High. You know, they're pretty simple stuff. There's some ductwork changes, three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, site work, minimal site work adjustments, two thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. There's a major technology revisions, forty-four thousand five eighty-four. That, that total comes from, um, it's the connection that runs from, you know, basically for our fiber. And I, I, I believe Mr. Fritz can correct me, but right now it runs into the bus compound and then jumps over to the maintenance compound. And basically, we need to run it directly to the maintenance compound and get it off the bus compound because it's being demolished. So kudos to Mr. Fritz and his team for recognizing that this would be a major issue, uh, had it not been rerouted and redone prior to the demolition. So, um, the first iteration of this was going to be over fifty-plus thousand. So they were able to do some work on it and get it into the forty-four thousand range, which, you know, anytime we can save ten thousand over a revision, that would be, that's a good thing. Uh, building permit revisions, fifteen thousand seven dollars. You know, those are typical. We've had those on every project just to revise some of the things with our building permits. And then door and frame revisions, just two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That happens as we, we work through process and learn, you know, people that are utilizing the spaces, how they're going to be utilizing them. A lot of times this ends up as changes in like custodial maintenance area so that they can utilize the area a little better. So those are all the totals and, you know, our new total contract is thirty-seven million, seven hundred and five thousand forty-one dollars.
Mr. Lewis, we, we, we're not done yet, but we've done a lot of site work. Any concerns or soil at the junior high, like we're seeing in green? Or are we pretty confident?
They're fairly far along and I have not been brought into any conversations of concern soil, so, but I'm not, so. I don't want any soil issues. We've had enough at the green school, so.
Any other questions on time, budget?
So far, so good.
All right.
Any other question? Mrs. Weber, please call the board.
Mr. Ballin.
Hi.
Mr. Adams.
Hi.
Mr. McCurial.
Hi.
Mr. McCurial. And Mrs. White.
Hi, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims Elementary GMP number one.
So moved. It's a change order and it basically, they predict, they, I, I think this is an area they have to demo and the existing asphalt thickness was thicker than they thought it would be. So when they had to get it, I believe when they had to get it out, this is the additional cost to get it out, though. At least I'm, I'm fairly positive that's what it's about. So it's thirteen thousand oh eighty-three.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the board.
Mr. McCurial. Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mrs. White.
Hi.
Mr. Ballin.
Hi.
And Mr. McCurial.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the, um, authorized for bus purchase.
So moved. Second.
So this is our, I apologize for the lateness. We, we thought we had a way to be able to do it through the EPC. And the EPC pricing was a little bit just off with the way they had done things. I think probably even some COVID issues. So we're just going to go ahead and put our normal bus bid back out to bid. And, you know, we can still achieve getting buses by, um, early to mid-July. So, um, that's, that's all we're asking for. The estimated cost is around three hundred and forty thousand.
I do have one question about the Ohio PA grant. Wh- what is the bu- the buses that we're buying? How are they fitted to satisfy that grant?
It's just getting rid of older buses that are less efficient and less, um, I guess, um, environmental friendly. So we were able to secure a grant to purchase basically one bus. So the cost of one of our buses will be offset by the grant.
Okay, but there's no different fuel type or retrofitting or?
No, it was just about the years of the buses. So, you know, if we can continue to be successful, we'll continue to apply. And, you know, Mr. Miller did a, did all the work for the grant this past year and, you know, certainly in collaboration with Mrs. Weber and her team. So if we can continue to do that, we will, to get rid of, as we, because we're, we've spent on a cycle now, pretty consistently buying four buses a year, which is a good cycle for us. So, um, if we can continue to offset one at least, you know, maybe next time we'll write for more and see what happens. But, um, I don't know if people just don't write for the grants, because I was surprised. The first notification we got for it was, I didn't think we were going to get anything. And then when they told us we were going to get the cost of one bus, that was pretty good news to us. So it helps. But no, no major changes to the bus or anything like that. Just more, I would say more, uh, efficient in the way, in the, probably the, contamination from the bus is probably a lot less than anywhere above.
I'm noting that the, you know, the last five years or so, the price of buses has been pretty stable. We've been able to get them under eighty thousand. I see, this is kind of creepy now. Is that what you're feeling?
The most recent pricing that we saw was a little higher than the previous year. I think last year was around Q five. the previous year. I think last year was around Q five. And if if we'll see, we'll see how it comes in, because I think the stock buses that we typically purchase are still within that range. But if we were to go with the EPC price, and that's why we're doing the bid, the EPC price was higher than what we think we could do on a bid. Um so the EPC price was around ninety thousand for a bus, you know, so. And when Mrs. Weber and I talked about it, it's like, well, let's just go out for bid. If we're gonna get a bus cheaper through a bid, then paying the EPC price, then let's go do that. That's great. Thank you. Save low extra money.
Any other question? Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
And Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the agreement for student support services.
So moved. Second. So this is uh item six, seven, and eight are all kind of woven together. Uh this is an agreement. The first one is an agreement with student support services, specifically one staff member that supports students primarily at the junior high for behavior, academically, other kinds of issues. Just provides an amazing support uh for the teams at junior high. One positive uh as we look at for next year as our staff member down there now has uh gotten some additional time that he now can provide more services to Green School. So the the team, uh Mr. Tudor and Dr. Ray have worked on that. So uh Mr. Tomlin will pro- provide some daily support for students at Green while also not compromising his time at the junior high. We think that's a good thing. Uh because he now can start to form relationships with student at Green so that some of the transition for some of our students that need that support into the junior high can only be more solidified. So we're excited about this change. I think it's a good thing. Uh he does an amazing job there. What you will notice in items seven, seven, and eight, that this is really a shared service uh that we enter into an agreement with the cities of Montgomery and Blue Ash, as they help fund this position. Um so I've reached out recently um to Mr. Walsh and Mr. Rivlett, the city managers of those two great cities. And I never had to ask twice. Uh they've said we're all in. Again, great partnership with our cities as as they are committed to supporting students as well.
Mr. Forrest, I think that's been a great partnership for a number of years. Is this, you mentioned uh service at Green.
Yes.
Is that an evolving need that wasn't there in the past?
Uh I I don't think it's, I don't think it's an increasing need. I think it's been there. Uh we just gotta have the time uh with our staff member to devote the time we think we need. But when that extra time opened up for this, for Mr. Tomlin, Mr. Tudor jumped on it right away.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
And Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the agreement with Pursuit Support Services with the city of Blue Ash.
Some second. Again, I'd just like to publicly thank the city of Blue Ash for their partnership uh in this agreement.
Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I motion passes. And I need a motion for the agreement for Student Support Services with the city of Montgomery.
So moved. Second. And likewise, I'd like to thank the city of Montgomery for partnering with us and service the students.
Thank you. Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I motion passes. I need a motion for the agreement with ECTS.
So moved. Second. This is an agreement we'd like to enter into dating technology services as they help uh help, they actually provide uh network and technician support. Uh I want to thank Mrs. Weber and Mr. Fritz for working on this agreement and certainly opening up their confidence.
I would just add, we we are going back to our normal support service. Um we had some additional staff this year due to having the virtual classroom setting. So I think we're going back to our normal number of technicians that we had pre, pre pandemic. Um we we may, as we have in the past, if we find that we have some additional project needs, we may supplement the contract um with some additional services with ECTS.
Yeah, a good example of that is even this Friday, we are, we don't have enough staff to multitask between Sims and the high school and and getting everything done by Friday evening or this weekend. And Monday morning is when construction starts. So we have at times just a couple extra days where we flex. Yeah. And what's really nice about this is uh we don't also pay for holidays. We don't pay for uh uh vacations. Uh it's very flexible if they're not here. What's wonderful about our network engineer is that when, if he takes a vacation, Dayton Cincinnati puts a network engineer on on property for us. So um very important to us is that is our lifeline to all things we do to keep that up and running. So yeah, just little updates. Any questions?
Mr. Fritz.
I really don't know how we would have gotten through this year without the support of of the technician.
Yeah, I mean, we've.
They really did an unbelievable job um from Chromebook distribution and repair and just really
Live help desk.
Providing support for
Yeah, live.
For our our virtual students in particular.
Mr. Fritz, can you remind me, is this typically a two-year contract?
Uh it is. We've had it where we've done a one-year and an extension. Uh so it's been back and forth, but it's it's been two years sometimes in the past, sometimes been a one-year and and just an extension. We worked with them to look at these costs and said, okay, let's let's do a two-year. They've been there. It's been a very good relationship. So we felt like this is opportunity to, let's do a two-year. Yeah.
Um on my supporting documentation, it talks about um there's a table of rates and payments. And there's a line item in there, three thousand dollars, but it's not attached to anything.
There is uh right across from it, it's the travel and mileage, if that's you. That is a cap of three thousand, absolutely. In fact, this year we did not uh do that. So we wanted to be respectful to uh our three technicians that move around the district. As you imagine, we've got roughly nine buildings technically, or ten at times when Aldine was here. Um and they move around and we, and some of them are more stable than others. And they're they're spending their gas mileage to do that. We do that with our staff. However, this year it was obviously not. So we put that in as an opportunity uh to uh be respectful of their time and travel and their cars. And that goes according to the federal mileage rate.
IRS.
Yeah, thank you. IRS, not true.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. I think, you know, sort of some of the unsung heroes of this whole thing to keep up, you know, everything running and our technology um working well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Weber, please call the role. Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the agreement um special detail and emergency services with the city of Montgomery.
So moved. Sorry. So occasionally we'll have special events um that require special detail either for fire, for police services. And this is just our ability to work with the city of Montgomery to provide those kinds of services on an as-needed uh basis and depending upon the event. So Mr. Lewis, I know you work pretty closely. It works really well. City's been great with us on this.
No, no, they're coming.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I motion passes. Mr. Forrest, I'll call anything else.
Yeah, I have two. There's um, you know, uh this is, this is our last fourth meeting um as we conclude this school year. Just a couple of commendations and comments if I may. Um obviously, the board was with us on Sunday um as we recognize four hundred-plus graduates and I don't know about you, but what a special day for our school. And how we, we got to be together um to recognize um our amazing graduates and and wish them well on their next journey. Um it was a, it was an incredibly, incredibly powerful day. Um and I, you know, I have to give credit to Mr. Mater, his team for putting that together and working um with our friends at Centa Center who do an amazing job. So I thought it was a great day, not only for our graduates, but for me personally as well. So many thanks to everybody involved. And again, thank you to the board for your part in that as well. Uh as you know, tomorrow's our last day of school. Um it's been an interesting year, obviously, but I think a highly successful one. Uh and and the board has done a great job of of providing our team the necessary tools in order, as I said to the graduates on Sunday, uh to give our school back uh to our students. Uh whether that be in a face-to-face model, but also in a remote fashion. So um tomorrow, at some point, I will release a couple of videos, one to the community and one to our staff. Just acknowledging the work that everybody has put in and the efforts and patience um to get us through a model and a plan that I thought um although not perfect uh was highly successful this year. So um you know, I wish our students and staff a good couple of days, uh a day, days that really should be about reflection and celebration. Because there is much to reflect on, but there's also much to celebrate about. Uh so again, um I, you know, I think we've, I I think we've gone through a a great school year. Um and I think everybody deserves a ton of credit for that.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the treasurer's agenda. I need a motion for the approval of the contract for services from Hamilton Clermont Cooperative HCC.
So moved. Second.
This is just a continuation of a many, many year relationship with the Hamilton Clermont Cooperative that are known as HCC. Uh they provide the support for all of the uh financial services software that I use utilize in my department for accounts payable, inventory control and uh payroll processing. They're the backbone of what we utilize for all of our EMIS reporting to the state. Uh they provide some support for our uh inter- our IVP uh tracking and services and new this year to the contract. Um we do have some internet support included within this contract. It's really gonna serve two, two major um roles for us. And Mr. Fritz can help me if I don't get this quite right. But one, you know that earlier this year, we um actually asked the board to change internet providers. What this will do is provide um support for us through that transition um July and August to make sure we don't have any uh discontinuance of of services in that timeframe. And then going forward, it's also going to provide us a redundancy in our internet support um at a much lower cost altogether for those two services. So if I miss something, Mr. Fritz, please let me know.
That's right.
So there is a bit of an increase in the contract this year to be able to provide that internet um support.
Yeah, and your student, and your student information is in there as well. That's the other, our, that's also our posted.
Yeah, I did want to ask you on that. Thanks for the clarification on the increase to the internet. Um student information system, we used to house that in-house.
We used to house it in-house. It was a uh Pearson product called SASI, S A S I.
Right.
The end-of-life app back in two thousand thirteen. And we made the transition to state software, if you can call it state software, but it's majority of the state uses this software. Uh progress book, now owned by Frontline.
Um that's not an option to host within Learn 20.
Correct. You cannot host, you cannot host that software yourself. You need to host it as an ITC. They have a direct connection to the state. So as Mrs. Weber alluded to with the EMIS reporting, all of our data goes there to the ITC and they have personnel there. It actually helps you get that data to the state correctly.
So then is it accurate to say that all districts have to kind of have this similar?
They do. All districts have to have this kind of agreement for a lot of the services that Mrs. Weber identified. And in in the student information side, uh some ITCs, like HCC, that's what they're called, ITCs, will give you an option. Do you want to do progress book or do you want to do power school? And we're on a progress book, which the majority of schools in the state of Ohio are on for an SIS, the student information system. Yeah, I think you, yeah, absolutely.
All right, any other questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
And Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda, including item on the addenda one F, D, H, I, two C, and three N, O, P, and Q.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the role. Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
Mr. Baller.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Kellerman.
Hi.
And Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Motion passes. Moving on to other Board of Education business. I need a motion for the approval um of the collective bargaining agreement with the Sycamore Education Association.
So moved. Second.
Do you have a, any, a slide about? You don't? Okay. Oh. Okay, Mrs. Weber, would you like to review the, briefly the agreement with the Sycamore Education Association and the Board of Education?
Thank you. And do, Mrs. Weiss, I I want to start out just um with a thank you to all of those who are involved in this process, uh the members of our um Board of Education team, Mr. Wallace, uh Mr. Lampy, who is our our Board Legal Counsel, and myself, we're on on that side of the team. And then also to thank you to the members of the Sycamore Education Team, Education Association Team, who also participated in this process um led by by their president, Daniel Scrayz, um their vice presidents Corin Minyard and Jesse Maxwell. And then they also had Cory Bonden and Victor Harris, as well as their OEA unit server repertoire involved in that process. Uh we we worked through what we saw as kind of a streamlined process. Um first time in a long time that we've been able to uh finalize the agreement by uh before the end of the school year. Uh the current contract goes through July thirty-one of this year. This is a new three-year agreement um that addresses some working conditions or and or other types of things within um the contract. It 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 impacts the operation of the district and then it also deals with compensation. So the three-year agreement has um a a salary package of a two percent increase on the base in year one, two and a quarter in year two, and two and a half in year three. So this will get us through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year within our our current financial parameters. Um again, just very thankful to to the work of all the teams, our both teams, to be able to bring this contract together. And with that, I just open it up. If you have any questions from the Board of Education, Mr. Forrest, if you have anything that you'd like to add as well.
No, uh Mrs. Weber, I think you said it really, really well. This is, this is a good day for the, for our staff, for the board, for the community um to to get this agreement settled. With a fair agreement for all parties, uh as being respectful of the taxpayer dollar. I know it's a high priority for the sport of education. I'm grateful to both teams for the collaborative effort that they went through to get us to this point in an expedited fashion. Um and I think that sets the tone for the next several years. So congratulations to everybody involved.
The MTA presented this to their membership last week for a ratification vote. And it it was approved by nearly ninety-eight percent of those who voted. So um again, thank you for the, for the work um of both teams and to be able to bring what I think will be a, is a good agreement to take us forward. And it's also great to be able to thank and look back at this past year and just feel really good about all we have been able to accomplish working together. And I think this, this is a reflection of that.
Yeah, I'd like to also show my appreciation to both teams for for having such a quick settlement. And that's the first time I can even remember, maybe since you bit me on this, whatever, that it's wrapped up that quickly. Um and also, you know, I want to thank SCA and and our team for uh, you know, being willing to engage next time around in interest-based bargaining. I think that collaboration's gonna just continue and steamroll would be something great for for Sycamore forever. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you as well. I think it it demonstrates the partnership we have between administration, the school board, and the teachers uh to really uh move this forward in a timely manner. Uh that was fair and equitable to uh everybody. Uh so I appreciate the hard work and support from both sides uh that got us to where we are today, which is a really good place. So thank you.
Mrs. Weber, um Mr. Lampy, and Mr. Wallace, Mr. Forrestoffel, Ms. Scrayz, Russell, Sycamore Education Association, and everyone involved in this. I think it was um a very, a very good process. And I think we reached a a good agreement for everyone. So thank you for everyone for their participation in that and moving forward.
And as a follow-up, um we will be sending out uh a customer lease. We're working on a joint statement from ourselves and SCA to to announce this agreement for the approval of.
All right, any other questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the role.
Mr. McCurryo.
Hi.
Mr. Baller.
I.
Mr. Commer.
I.
Mr. Evans.
I.
And Mrs. Weiss.
I.
Motion passes. Our next item is our COVID stipend. And the board felt it was necessary and appropriate to recognize the extraordinary efforts that every employee in our district has made in this very challenging year. And we are happy to announce that a $2,000 stipend will be given to every employee in the district. Mrs. Weber, was there anything else that you wanted to add to this?
I would just add that one of the things that has helped us make this possible is the availability of federal grant dollars that have been made available to support districts to be able to continue the continuity of services through the pandemic. And I think that that's really important. And one of the things that I think has been special about the way we've been able to approach this year is that we have been able to provide five days a week services for our students and families who wanted to have their kids in the schools and in the buildings. And we have also provided excellent programming for those families and students who decided to move forward with a virtual option. And that's because of the work of a lot of people. And I think that because of that, being able to utilize these funds, we can show our appreciation for the extra work, extra effort and, you know, the extra learning and approach that all of our employees had to do, had to take into consideration to be able to, to make all of those things work. So thank you to the Board of Education, thank Mr. Forsthal for your support in bringing this forward as well, to be able to do this for our staff. Our intent would be to pay these stipends out by the end of August. And the real reason for that is that we are still working through our grant process and the availability of funds from the feds for when that would flow. So we believe that'll come in July, but we just want to give ourselves a little bit of extra time to make sure that those dollars are, are available.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think, you know, as was stated here, this is a recognition of just the team coming together and doing things right. Even look around the nation and see kids still not in school. See the basic debate and discussion that we had back in July about how to get this done, how to get kids in school that need to, that would like to be in school and how to educate kids at home if they want to be remote. I think we did that early. We did a lot of things, even starting in April of last year and just taking the lessons learned from what happened in the spring and really fixing things we thought didn't work right and making it work out so it really executed on the mission of the school district. And we saw that in our report about two months ago, about how the learning throughout this process really was equivalent to, you know, the best that we really could do. I know Mrs. Weiss and I had listening sessions with the staff. And when there was a lot of raw emotion, you know, from the staff about the extra effort they were putting in to do this. It wasn't 100%, it was 110 and 120%. I think it really paid off for a successful year. So success, congratulations to the whole team for what they did. And it's a well-deserved stipend.
Yeah, I would just like to add my appreciation as well to the entire staff, teachers and both in the classroom and the support staff for our students around the entire district. You know, we were faced in August with what we thought was a nearly impossible task of having a somewhat normal school year and educating our children, getting our kids to school, feeding our kids, supporting our kids. And here we sit today with, with two days left of school and our staff did an amazing job to educate our kids. So thank you for everything you've done and I hope everybody enjoys their summer.
Yeah, I'll pile on to that. I want to thank the staff for coming together. I know at the time it was a really scary moment. There was a lot of fear and uncertainty. And you came to work and you did it. And not only did you do what you do all the time, you had to do remote, you had to do in person and prepare for all that. You just managed to make it work. I can say from my own kids' experiences, that the days they were quarantined or whatever, there really wasn't a drop off. It was fantastic education that they got this year. And, you know, the stipend is recognition of, albeit it's smaller, it's a recognition of the great work that you've done this year. And just as a parent, as a board member, we're very appreciative of everything you've done this year.
I just echo the appreciation. I thought it was really important that we recognize everyone in the district. I think that's been said already, but from our bus drivers to our support staff, to all of the, the teaching staff, everyone in the central office, that everyone who does something every day, this year was a unique year and required above and beyond, across the board. And this is a small, small token of our appreciation, but in a tangible way. My hope, my hope is that we could do this earlier in the summer and not later in the summer so that our staff can enjoy the benefits of it. I recognize the, the possible, you know, challenges that we have. But my hope would be that we can get this monies into the hands of our staff sooner than later. But it's a sincere appreciation, I know from everyone on the board. And so thank you.
So this staff knows how I feel about what they did this year. It's been truly remarkable. There isn't a day, and I mean, there wasn't a day I wasn't in this community when I didn't have somebody, whether it be a parent or a community member, tell me specifically, personally, about an experience they had in a positive way with the staff members of Sycamore Schools about what we accomplished this year. We talk about plans and the plan was a good one. That plan didn't mean anything without the work of our staff. And how they came, as Mr. Macario said, they came to work every day with some very uneasy circumstances. And they made it work. We gave school back to our kids. For those families that made the choice to be remote, we gave them a great and robust opportunity as well. So on behalf, you've heard the board say, and on behalf of your superintendent, please know how proud I am. You will hear that more tomorrow, but this is well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forsthal. All right, just two more items on our agenda, strategic planning update.
Mrs. Weiss, we do need to take a vote to approve the resolution to authorize the COVID stipend.
Oh, that wasn't the, okay, I didn't. Definitely another year because I am missing like major things on the agenda today. I do not want to do that. All right, I need a motion to approve the COVID stipend.
So, second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commer.
I.
Mr. Evans.
I.
Mr. Macario.
I.
Mrs. Weiss.
I.
And Mr. Ballen.
I.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, moving on to the strategic planning update.
Mr. Lewis. Just really quickly, the groups are, are still continuing to meet. We're nearing, having our, our project statements and, and objectives defined. I would say sometime probably this summer, late summer, we'll have a, an update, more robust update for you about where all the project teams are. Certainly would love more connectivity and input to, you know, a project team or a group to be able to meet with the co-leads periodically, get updates. And then we did have two information sessions on the same day, May 26th, as the other one. Ms. Bondright told me never do that to her again. So, and I, I said, okay, we'll, we'll make sure we don't do, do it again on the same day. But it did make for, it made for a long day, but it, it was an engaging day. We had, it was interesting, we had about 45 to 47 people during the lunch session and then only about 20 to 25 in the evening. So it was interesting that more people joined at lunch. And Mr. Evans, thank you for joining the lunch session, really appreciated that. Really overall, I felt like the information we gave out was good, got a lot of positive feedback. And Ms. Bondright assured me that the, you know, it was funny, we were taking kind of poll on how many people would attend. And I, I felt like it was a low number. And she said, just remember, this has been an ongoing process. People have been engaged in it, they've gotten information at their home. And people trust us with this stuff. They, they believe in what we're doing and they know that we have a path. And so, you know, their lack of engagement may not be lack of interest, it just maybe they trust us with what we're doing and where we're headed. So that, that was a, a positive, I think. But overall, you know, I think having 70 people log on and listen to more updates about the strategic plan is a good thing. And then we'll re-engage in that process again in the fall to give teachers an opportunity, to give classified staff an opportunity, to give our community another opportunity to hear more updates, probably in September after the school year gets off and running. So appreciate the support and, you know, we appreciate this process going forward. Again, it's, it's continuing on, the project teams are in a good place. And I'm excited about the updates we'll be able to give you close to the end of summer.
Yeah, I just want to give one shout out to Mrs. Bondright for that flyer that went to all the homes. I've heard from a number of people in the community how well done that was. And being part of that strategic planning team, I felt like it really summarized, you know, what we're looking at and where we're going. So thank you, Mallory.
All right, our last item I put on the agenda is policy liaison update. I just didn't want to lose sight of policy, just as we're wrapping up sort of the school year in the summer. Our, our policy liaison is Mr. Commer. So he will be meeting with Mrs. Weber to look at, I would like to try to put together a schedule that we can kind of just employ for the next few years and what sections of our policy will, will be reviewing. Are there any sections that anyone is very, if any other board member is interested in having reviewed? It could just be one or two policies, it doesn't have to be a whole section. Please get that information to Mr. Commer or Mrs. Weber.
Yeah, maybe just, I can provide an update. Mrs. Weiss, I can just speak a little bit. As, as you know, the last year we have been focused on what I'll just describe as the non-discretionary policy changes. We had changes last year, like Title IX, it came to us and we were required to change. I think Mrs. Weiss said this, well, we are heading into a new season now where we can work on our discretionary policy changes. And so we're at a time now where we're going to open the door. Mrs. Weber and I will be meeting and setting a plan out and charting for this new chapter, this new season of policy revisions. I have some ideas, I reviewed the data on the OSBA policy updates on places we can go. I have a, you know, a personal opinion on a few of them. I think one example is our conflict of interest areas, I think could be sharpened and strengthened from a policy standpoint for what's out there in the, in the, at the state level as an example. And, and I would welcome, and I, I want to use this time as, as Mrs. Weiss indicated, to open the door for all the board members if they're, as we're heading into this new, I'll say discretionary season of policy revisions. If you have any, please share them with me now, or you can share them with me. And, and Mrs. Weber, over time, and we'll, we'll come back with a plan to this group on which, which policies we'll plan to review. And we'll come back to the board in a future meeting with the exact plan. But if you have any inputs to that plan, I would welcome them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commer.
And Mr. Commer, if I may, if you have something, policies that are hitting the radar and you've kind of compiled that into some kind of list, if you, if you share that out, just to have an understanding of, what changes might be on the front. Also, one thing that I would request is that, as you and Mrs. Weber worked together on this, that we've worked through the procedure to updating our policies on our website. Over the past two years, we've had policies around PE waiver, naming rights and gifted services. And they haven't hit the board docs. If you go on and check those policies, the latest updates, 2007, 2012, we have to get these policies that we pass in board meetings posted so that the community has access to them. One, one thing is, there's, on the PE waiver, the way we're rolling that out is in conflict with our PE waiver policy that we approved. I even saw this on my junior's form, he had to check four boxes about requirements that he will complete these things by his junior year. That's not part of the policy. So I, I feel for the seniors, they could have taken advantage of the PE waiver had they wanted to do that this year. Because that's not, the website even talks about these requirements around PE waiver being done by your junior year. So I, I think there needs to be an alignment between what the policies are and how we roll it out. I know that's gotten us into trouble in the past with a number of things around accelerated path PE waiver. So if we can have a way that everything gets upgraded so that up to date, I mean, reviewing who, who does that and how often.
That's great input, Mr. Macario, but we will review that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Commer.
Mr. Commer, do you know if there's a set of information that we talked about, the number of policy violations that have happened in the last year, five years or whatever? Just to, I mean, there would be some policies that just seem to get exercised a lot. And those may be ones also just to make sure they're up to date. Uh, Mr. Wallace, we've got a list of, give the list of transgressions, what policies they apply. I did not know that answer, Mr. Evans, but I think that's a good question. Just to help you scope some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Commer. All right, anything else from the board?
Just one question. I know, Mr. Forsthal, we sent an update on supplemental piece going forward, but there wasn't a closure date on when the final supplemental would be for the last, the last part of the year would get completed.
In terms of the surveys?
In terms of the surveys.
I can get that to you. I, I think that what's hanging out there are spring sports yet. Because spring sports are now just completely, so I don't believe those surveys are out yet.
Well, beyond spring sports, it's spring sports and the other supplemental that are out there. You're supposed to come back to us with a condensed list of other supplementals. Cause we talked about there being 300 supplemental contracts and maybe we weren't going to survey all of them.
Right, we're not.
And the question, you were supposed to come back and provide a list of what one, you were going to survey. Of the departments.
I'll work with Mr. Wallace to get that.
I guess we've been talking about this for 18 months.
Yep, and we have fulfilled all of the reports back to the board that the board has asked for. That's, that's a new one because I understand, of course, we've decided to kind of phase this in a little bit. And, and done that, we've provided that. Mr. Wallace, Dr. Ju, for looking through supplemental committee to add additional type of things. That's not a finite list just as yet. But as that continues to evolve, that team will continue to provide that information back to you.
I mean, to my perspective, I'm not sure everyone else is on board right now. We talked about on the full list of supplementals by the end of the year, reach the end of the year, you know, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, I don't know that there was any, any commitment to do the full list of supplementals.
But that's why, that's why we were supposed to get a supplement back so that we could agree on doing that by the end of the year. I mean, I know we started talking about this in February of 2020, I mean, we talked about it nine times about getting through this.
Yeah, and we, and my knowledge that in the April meeting, Mr. Evans, we provided an update on our status. And I would love to hear from the board, the rest of the board, that the board was comfortable with where they're at. If you're interested in a more detailed list of what's coming, we can provide that to you.
And when is when we completed, I missed. Cause I know Mr. Commer, we're talking about trying to get this baseline done so we can move forward with it. And it was more than just sports, I mean supplemental, I mean, even Mr. Macario talked about, we touched so many supplemental, let's make sure we go out and do that. So it was beyond sports.
Right, which we've done, I think we've seen some of the clubs, some of the data I provided you with the update that we have done, some of that. But again, the supplemental committee has been defining specific ones to begin with. The idea is that we would balloon that out over time. You know, understanding, of course, this is a new and unique endeavor. Unique, not only to Sycamore, but unique to everybody else. There's, there's no other school district who aren't always doing this kind of thing. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, that's just the reality of it. So I think we want to be deliberate and strategic in terms of how we do that. Because as you saw in the update I provided you, there's some tweaking of the survey that we need to do based on our experience. Put it out, that's a good thing, because we want to get it right. So.
In the spirit of a growth lung, said, yes, Mr. Forsthal, what would really help me is not just receiving the roll of data. is not just receiving the raw data from the surveys, but an analysis of that raw data and any insights that we have gleaned from the doing the survey and what actions we may or be planning or have to take, or if it's reaffirming what we already do or but the survey, just to do the survey and to do the data is a lot of work with no benefit if we don't get to the point where we do analysis, insight, and the actions to take. And so what what would be helpful for me is, and I appreciate getting the raw data, don't get me wrong, but I think the, as we continue to grow and learn and 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 pioneer for um this district, how we uh leverage this data, what would really help me is seeing the uh recommend, the insights and recommended actions that we're learning from these. And I think it's different for each group. I mean, I think Mr. Harden would have something together. I think Mr. Yui, Dr. Yui would have some things together. And um if they could, after the all of the surveys are done, come back to this board, what I would like to see is the in insights and recommended changes, or if there's no no recommended changes, if the insight is, we were on, you know, we have no recommended changes, that's fine. I would love to see more of the analysis than just the raw data going forward and and a purely a growth mindset.
Yeah, and and that's how they're looking at this. Please remember that the intent of this was to provide the people that oversight these clubs, teams, activities, is to use that data in a growth mindset. Um, but if the board is now requesting that you have their insight, for lack of a better term, that's something we can figure out later for.
For for me personally, just getting the raw data is interesting and I can glean through it. I I'd just like to to compare my review of the data with their review of the data and be able to ask questions of them uh from what they are seeing from the data. Maybe maybe my request would be to have them come to this board with their, you know, analysis, insight, and recommended actions. That would be we haven't done in the past. It's a new thing that 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 would, I think, be a help to me. I'm just speaking out from my view. I don't know.
I echo those thoughts. I think that, um, what it would do is it would also give kind of an affirmation as to the process. Like, is this a process that we want to continue as well? Are we learning anything from it? Because if the insight is, you know, we're not really not getting anything out of this, then, you know, that that's also insight.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with O R C one-two-one dot two-two-two-one. Employment dismissal, evaluation, compensation, discipline of a public employee, appointment of public official or regulated individual.
So, second.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. Mr. Evans.
I.
Mr. Comer. Mr. Mercurio.
I.
Mrs. Weiss.
I.
And Mr. Ballard.
I.
All right, we'll take.